Good evening. We're going to start the first workshop tonight. We're going to talk about the Michigan City Courthouse project. So at this time, Madam Honore, you want to bring us up to speed on where we're at?
So tonight, we have a vote on the agenda for the intent to proceed. So we're at the final stage of the design stage. Am I saying that right? Okay. We're at the end of the design phase. So the next step, and please, Matt or Dan or somebody, correct me if I misspeak, we're now ready, after we approve the final design, then we're ready to move forward to the bids. And so you're going to see on your paper, and I just put mine in the packet, I guess, excuse me, that we're a little over. We're a little bit higher than we expected to be and a little higher than we thought we were going to be a few months ago when we talked about this. So we have done everything we possibly could to reduce the building, to reduce some of the features in the building. We have taken as much as we can out. And so this is where we are now. The preliminary design cost is $24,62,137. And so we're, now, that includes the sanitary cost, which we're still going to talk to Michigan City, and it includes the permit fees, which we're still going to talk to the city council, but we're going to talk to them after the elections. So that's where we are. There, excuse me. We had a brief meeting a little over a week ago. And we have gone, Christie and I have talked about this, and tried to figure out what to do here. The only thing we can do is, if we have to add a little more money into the mix, there is money in the general fund. We get $5 million a year from our CAGIT money. So we do have 2.6 million that we could spend on this. And like we talked about before, that's how we're going to pay the money back, pay our bond back. It's a tax-lease exempt bond, excuse me, and we'll make the payments out of the CAGIT money. So it is no cost, no additional cost to the taxpayers of the county. So having said that, Dan Weinheimer and Matt Wright are here. And then that's from Structure Point, as well as Chris Murphy and John Kennedy. And from Ton and Blank, we have Matt Hubbard and Brian Delich and John Gilmore. So if you have any questions whatsoever, and also Doug is here. So if you have any questions, let us know now.
Yeah, I do. Just so I get numbers correct. Let's go back to the original thing was, I need the exact thing here. Twenty-four million?
The cost now?
Yeah, but I want the 24 mil that it was yesterday and to what it is today. What's our increase, I guess?
Well, our increase is 2,137,111.
So we went from 24 something to 26.
Yeah.
You didn't say that, thank you.
Yeah, we went from 22.
22.4.
Right.
I remember that. Thank you. 22.4 to 26.
Right. Twenty-four.
My bad. Twenty-four.
The original was 22,492,026 dollars. And we went to 24,62,137 dollars. Okay. So, excuse me, a couple of things that, you know, construction costs are up, steel prices are up. You know, we've cut, we've cut the building down. And so it's just, you know, we're at...
The bare minimum that we could possibly be, even though it went up another 2 mil.
Right. And I also want to tell you that we, before we go too much further, you're going to see that we had this sheet put in your...
Yep.
Okay. These are the additional funds that we can't use towards the cost of the project, but we can use some of these monies if the department heads and elected officials allow us to, for things like finishing. I talked to Tony Mancuso today, and he has 173,000, excuse me, in his communicable diseases fund. And he is willing to use that to finish his office. He said if he uses that to finish it, instead of us paying extra money to do that, that it'll be done the way they want it done. And so I said, sure, we'll take it. So, you know, and the judges are here.
Can we ask questions? We're going along before we get too far ahead.
Sure.
Joey, I was on Health Department. He actually did, he did a total rehab of his water department with these type of funds.
Correct.
So he could use that for construction. He is not limited to that, as long as it goes to the Health Department. It doesn't have to be that he gets the way, wants the office that way. He can use money for construction. If they're putting walls up, he can use it for drywall.
Right.
But I'm just saying, you said that these numbers...
Well, I probably didn't say it correctly.
I'm just saying, I'm just picking a couple of parts, but this does not count for that. They can use it for construction cause.
Right. Well, right. But what I meant by that is, he can't take 173,000 and put it into the 24 million.
But he could do it for the actual structure, drywall, lights, every inch...
That's exactly right. And that will save us money in the long run, but...
It's not decorations.
Right. That's right.
It was misquoted.
Yeah. No, you're right. And he did say that. He can use it for electric, he can use it for walls, flooring.
Anything of its proper.
So not just for his office? He's willing to...
No, it's just, it's just for his.
So that 173 is for us to spend in any fashion that we decide?
No, no, no. No. It's a Health Department fund, so it has to be used in the Health Department.
The section of the building that's helping, doesn't pay the Health Department. It has to be used to finish off or build, direct, construct the walls, the finishings inside that area.
And the same with the prosecutor fund.
True.
You get it?
Yes, no, I did.
Prosecutors here.
The prosecutor funds. I don't want to make sure, there's not a misquote of what's being said.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, too.
Okay. So the 4D money, we're, we are bound by the rules of the 4D money, which Christie and I have talked to John Mallers. We also will have to go to the federal authorities to get approval for that money to be used. But we can use, we can use 4D money for some of the costs.
Mr. Gelski. So again, I talked with Joey and Christie. I believe that we can go down, and we've done this many, many times, go down and lobby Indianapolis. So I'm not afraid to say that, just because they say you can't do it, doesn't mean that we're not going to be able to do it. If you go down and explain the situation personally, and you know people down there, I think we can work this out and try to get that out. If we had, if we had a couple of people that wanted to go, like you, maybe some representatives. I don't want to hear the part, "We can't do it," because that's, in my terms, BS. There's other ways you can make things happen. I've been down in Indianapolis before, so a lot of, so have you guys, and I believe, and commissioners have too. I know we've, we've won other battles throughout that.
Okay. If I can just, again, and then we can move on with it, I guess. So these are possible, possible funds to use. All right. So we already know we've got that one. And I guess as this workshop continues, we'll find out if the other departments are willing to go ahead and do that, because we don't have confirmation, other than the fact that these are possible. But we don't know, other than the Health Department right now, indoor slash 4D that we can use, the others. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, no. When we had a workshop several months ago, I think the judges did say that they would, they would give some money towards the project. You know, you can't use all of it, but you could use some of it.
So we need to know that, too. I mean, we don't want to drag, we can't take all this money that's available. It's not all, but we're going to find out tonight how much is, right?
I don't know if we'll be able to do that, because it depends on how much they need for, for operating costs next year. A lot of these funds, we take salaries out of.
What it says right there, approximately yearly received. So we can see the difference in what, absolutely, what's available, what's not available. Doug?
Well, I agree with this whole discussion, but for tonight's purposes, we're also looking for the notice to proceed, and I would suggest we run from this number we have here. We can always reduce it down after we get this worked out. But for tonight, we have a timing issue. If we don't give the architects a notice to proceed, it's going to bump us back, and we expect construction costs will increase. But again, we can work that out later and reduce the number down.
Mr. Gelski. Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
That's, okay. It's a big word right there. Thank you.
Maybe I missed, maybe I misheard the other day when we had a meeting, but I also heard that, along with this, would be the, the going for the bond, too. You have to have an amount you're going for the bond for. And I was at that meeting, and they said it can't be reduced. Whatever you go for, that's got to be the amount. That's what was said the other day.
We can pay that back off early.
I understand. But if we're, if we're saying, "We want to reduce it to X," and you're asking for 24 million, the total amount, it's 24 million when you file that paperwork?
Well, but, yeah, I agree. I agree. But we're not there to the point where we have to put the number and assign it until the council passes its resolution, which is coming from Bond Council.
So when is that coming?
Well, I got an email in to do a new, it'll be within the next couple of months.
So we'll have time for our next meeting to get into...
To actually set that number.
Right. Right. Tonight, this is the number we have for you tonight.
Yeah.
But what, when you vote at your meeting, it's going to be a notice to proceed to the architects to finalize the construction plans, so Ton and Blank can start to move to the bidding process, which is, it's interdependent to an extent, but it's a little bit independent from a timeline standpoint from Bond Council.
Does everybody understand that? All right. Thank you.
Now, the one other thing that I want to mention is that we still have IT costs and the sheriff's IT equipment. Christie and I have, we have an idea that we want to run by you, and we think it's a, it's a good one. We, every year, we get a little extra money, either in the general fund, or we get it in the riverboat fund. If we could start allocating, Darlene estimates the cost will be between 1.5 to 2 million dollars. So if we can start allocating that money like we do, the emergency reserve fund, if we can create a fund for the IT upgrades, if we can do that slowly, and then by the time they're ready to put the IT stuff in, we'll have that money accrued. Is that acceptable to all of you, or...
Mr. Gelski.
Of the 2 million dollars that increased, there is still no projection number for IT in this number? Or is that part of the...
There's none in there.
So my question is to the council that, the IT was never included, the sheriff was never included in this conversation.
Oh, you know, wait, I think they did put a million dollars. Did you, Matt? Yeah.
Was that the million they gave us there? Or was that the million that she asked us additional?
There's a million dollars in this projected budget for IT.
In the 24 million?
In the 24,629.
So what's your, what was your total IT cost in there?
We got a million dollars, if you looked under equipment and furnishings.
That was what you originally had.
No, that's what we just added.
What did you originally have for IT?
Zero.
How do we, how do we skip IT? How do we, we hire a firm, and we skip the whole IT process? That's why I just don't understand that part. It was brought up at many meetings. I was told I couldn't talk about it, but it was brought up at many meetings. How did we forget about that?
We didn't forget about it.
Well, we didn't, we didn't forget about it, because we kept bringing it up. And we kept going, "Oh, this is our budget," but it wasn't our budget. How did we miss it? How did we not invite IT or the sheriff's to talk, to doctors, those numbers?
They were invited to every meeting.
Well, they were not. And I'm going to tell you right now, if you want me to call her up, I'll have her call up. She was not invited to meetings. You want me to do that this meeting? I'd be glad to.
Darlene, you were at a lot of the meetings.
A lot of them, but not the ones with the money, part of it. And I'm going to tell you right now, she wasn't. I don't think we want to discuss that right now.
Well, anyway, we've got a million in there right now, but if we need extra...
That's not enough.
Well, I just said it wasn't enough.
No, but it's just a number. I'm glad we can make numbers up. We should have been way ahead of schedule this thing. I should have been the first people brought in.
Darlene was included in...
No, she wasn't. I'll bring it up here and ask you the exact quote. She was never brought in for any of these financial parts of talking about it, absolutely does not. And she was kept out of it. Absolutely not. All right. Okay. You got a question?
Yeah, kind of, sort of. Joey, part of your comment there was using riverboat funds or setting aside riverboat funds?
No. What I said was, we get additional funds in the general fund, and we get additional funds in riverboat every year. And some of that money could be set aside to use for the sheriff's equipment and IT's equipment. And what we would do is, what we would do is allocate in a special fund, so we can keep track of those numbers.
Isn't that strapping you a little bit?
No.
You're sure?
I'm positive. Listen, if, if the two of us sat here, one of us would say to the other one, "No, you can't do that." But this year, we, we got almost 2 million dollars extra in riverboat, and we have the CAGIT money that we can use. We also have, if you look on your, excuse me, little chart, franchise fees that we can use for that.
Mr. Gelski.
Mrs. Wensky, how much money do we have in the rainy day fund?
A little over 8 million dollars.
8 million, okay. And that doesn't count this, what I'm...
Well, we have not transferred everything.
The money that we asked?
Yeah. We still need to transfer the recent distributions.
Which would be about half that, then?
It's about, what would you say, half a million, a little more? Probably about half a million.
But that caught us up from the money that you guys didn't take out last year.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We already did that. Right, we transferred, that's when the numbers were there. Okay. So your 9 million dollars plus, we're going to get, we're going to get 2.5 million dollars for next year.
Right.
And we don't necessarily need to spend the 8 million dollars that we're putting towards the project right up front. So that's going to continue to, there'll be more money building up in that account as we go.
Well, just, I mean, just as a statement, regardless of what we do anyway, the 2.5 wouldn't go in there, because we're maxed out at 10 million dollars on that account.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure, because some of the council is not, not familiar with that. So when we set this up, that's how much money we allocated to be put away for that. The rest will just go back in our riverboat fund.
It's also my understanding, Mark, that when we go for the bonding amount, we were planning on using a fair amount of that, and we were going to start using that over a period of time, when the finance, once the project actually is expending money. So we would be knocking it down and adding back to it.
We can all come up with different ideas. I mean, that was what's said, but my guess would be, I like to do what we did two times with the money already. The first time was we built the jail, we put all 10 million dollars into it, because during, we have eight years to pay this off possibly. So in eight years, with 2.5 million dollars, we'll have an additional 10 million by the time that comes up, with the money still comes in the way it is, and that's the way we've been set it up as. So if, and this is not, this is not the money, this is just the dollars going for that. We still have money that goes to our budget. We also used it when we were in our financial problems in 2007, 2008, 2009, we used 10 million dollars. So, and that money's been, that's why it's come back up again.
And we did the 800 megahertz radio thing.
800 megawatts, basically. So with that, you know, I like to see the council do the same thing that the council in the past has done, put 10 million dollars up there, and start to fund back over again, and start allocating it back up. And in 2008, according to my projections, we should be able to pay off this and call it a day, and call this a day at that point. And that's still 2008 payoff.
You mean 2028?
Yeah, you're correct.
2028. Thank you. 2028. So I like, and that's what I like to have, but I'm going to try to convince, you know, the council as to how we get to vote for things, but I'd like to see us take the 10 million dollars, knock it down, then we're going to start working on our project that way, and get this thing into financing and pay it off.
Pay it off quicker, and we can start the next one.
The report, like we talked with...
Does anybody have any other questions, comments from the council? Is there any other commissioners? But... Well, no, I'm just asking, would it be worth it this particular time? I apologize. Would it be worth it at this particular time? Let's see how much we can use from probation fund, prosecutor fund, general fund. Again, we have balances, we have a possible fund to use. I'd like to get the numbers given to us. We're not voting, I know that tonight. But we already know, I guess, Health Department said this, I'd like to know about the others. And I think we have people in the audience that are here maybe to discuss that. We've got a short period of time, we can talk about it. If there's nothing else to discuss on the project itself, is there, who do you want? Mr. Iraik, you're top of the list. Come on up. You just happen to be number one on the page, that's all. Adult probation! Again, two funds.
You're saying I'm number one?
On the list. I clarify that, too, on the list. So it says you spend about approximately $298,000 a year, but you've got $530,000 in there. Is there... What?
That they receive...
I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
They use about 316, 317,000. Let's round it up.
Anybody else want to correct me? Jump on the page.
No, Ford's in... I can tell you that any kind of allocation of probation user fees beyond $10,000 is totally up to the judges. I have no control over that.
Fair statement. On both of your accounts, correct?
Yes.
Anything over 10 grand has to be approved by the judges.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So between now and, let's say, in our November meeting, maybe we can, you can go back with the judges, have a meeting, and talk to them more, see what kind of number that they feel... I was going to use the term comfortable with, but I kind of like the term uncomfortable with.
I can probably answer that one.
Huh?
I can probably answer that question.
Well, I understand, I understand it, but it's, this is a, you know, this whole thing is over cost, and we're trying to keep it down, because we got more stuff, you know, the other courthouse doing a lot of other things. So we're asking everybody. We're not asking for every dime you got, we're not asking, you know, to put anything in jeopardy. We're just asking, you know, for, if there's some contribution that could be made from the account. Mr. Gelski.
Thank you. So on both accounts, and I don't remember as much as the past, but maybe it was, you had 316,000 spent, you received 298,000, and on the other one, 122, and you received Is that because of unusual expenditures, because we did the, because what we did last year with the...
Downstairs?
Downstairs?
That's, that's out of the probation user fee fund, which is, is that 2102 or 2004? The other fund is the administrative fund. Anybody who's put on probation has to pay an administrative fee right up front. And that's either $100 for felons or $50 for misdemeanors. That money has been allocated toward two salaries that I've been paying for many years, and will run out probably when I retire. No, not tomorrow. But it's, it's now picking up speed, because the employees that we are paying out of that fund are moving up in their salary scale as probation officers. So that money's starting, it dropped below 300, didn't it? Or were about to?
Yeah. Right. You're at about 213,000.
The other fund is from which the funds for the basement were taken. That fund had a really positive swing in, I believe, February, more so than years gone by in the past, and kind of offset some of that expense to keep us kind of at the operating level that we've been. Because those funds are monthly user fees, so people on probation pay a monthly fee, whether it's a felon or a misdemeanor, they're different values. But that's used to basically fund our operation, other than salaries. Now, the administrative fee, like I said, covers two salaries. We also pay for our part-time secretary out of our probation fees. So we're already carrying three, three salaries, which in a finite period of time, one account's going to be dry up.
Okay, that was, that explained in 2004, but so the 2102, the number wouldn't necessarily be a negative balance, but we end up putting $50,000 for the downstairs that we took from, that the judges agreed to allow us to use.
That came out of that fund.
The 2102.
Yeah.
2102. So that, that number is not always a negative number.
No, no. I think that was impacted largely because of the construction.
Okay.
Although that was, that was a year ago. And so those monies came out in '18?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
See, that's the number I don't remember ever going to negative, because we looked at that number, and it wasn't negative last year, meaning the year prior to that, when we asked for the $50,000, or we negotiated the $50,000. So I don't remember that, because I remember we projected those numbers out, and there was never going to be a negative number on that one. Your other one, you're right, with the employees.
I had not anticipated discussing this without looking at the numbers specifically. I'm not sure I can...
Well, look at the numbers, and we'll talk more at the November meeting.
And again...
I understand.
Understand.
They're all nodding their head, yes.
Of course, yeah.
I can see it in the smiles. They're now turning to smiles.
And my smile is bigger, because I can't make that decision.
I got a text that says, "Whatever you need." I don't know. I don't know what that...
Joey?
Oh, yeah. I'll have to check and see what's...
No, he knows it wouldn't be for me.
So we only got like one minute left of this workshop, so we're going to continue this, obviously, but we put a little food in your, food for thought there. But the other departments that we're going to be looking at, we've already talked about the Health Department, the Prosecutor's Fund, 40...
I did have one last question for Steve.
Mr. Lake, could you, you want to, can I come forward?
My last question for Steve is, for next year, for Criminal Rule 26, are we going to be anticipating using any of these funds?
We haven't gotten that far.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question, too.
He didn't say no, did he?
Wait. Good question.
You can't say no.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No.
I'm already giving you all my 4D, or most of the 4D stuff, so I don't know about, I can't really afford to give you other stuff out of the infraction for all, if that's what you're looking for. I don't know what you're, what...
We're looking for anything and everything that we can get, so...
Yeah. So on the 4D, I think the 4D is going to be affected by, unless Mr. Gelski can convince
convince the feds to do it, I think it's, it's, that's all on a percentage basis or whatever, and I'm willing to give whatever you can get out of that, but.
Right. We understand that one's gonna be a little bit harder to.
No, I, I don't know, it's all, it, it all gets into this whole thing about percentages and.
Just the tournament house.
Yeah, and, yeah, when you're doing that, I mean, I'm willing to give you as much as that, because that's so hard to use. I'm willing to give as much out of the fund. I gotta replace the new computers down there, I can just tell you that, so out of that, some of that money's gonna come out to pay before, because the, the computers they have down there are going obsolete as of January. The, the last time they bought computers under the prior prosecutor they bought, I mean, that's now gonna be, can't be used.
Right. As we said with the judges, though, work, you know, kinda.
Yeah, I'm.
Crunchy's numbers.
Yeah, sure, I do. Okay, so just cut to the chase. Prosecutor Fund 2501, really, you have nothing that you can give. I can put a zero there.
If that's my infraction for all, I don't know which the number is.
Is that the one, Joey?
That would be the one.
Thank you.
And the problem is.
And then if we come down to 4D, you'll give as much of the 433,000 as you.
As whatever they will approve on a federal basis.
Correct.
And that all comes out.
I'm writing letters.
You gotta write letters and you gotta jump all these hoops, so if you can get that, hey, whatever you can get out of that is fine with me.
Cool. Thanks, man. And answer my question, I don't know about anybody else.
Yes, Mr. Gagelski. So real quick, if, if that is the case, Joe, I think that we should try to get our road trip set, because we can't wait forever on that one, and so.
Right. You gotta get approval, and then you gotta use it within a certain time period.
It's gotta be pretty exact.
Yeah, it, that's what I said, that's the whole thing, is that if you can jump through those hoops and you get that money, I'm, I'm all for it, so.
Cool.
Does anybody else have anything else, real quick? We're, we're pretty much out of time for this workshop that we have.
Thank you.
And then we'll talk to you more in November. Mark your calendar.
All right.
Thank you, that concludes, does anybody have anything else they need to talk about regarding the courthouse? That completes that workshop, and we're gonna go.
Where are you going?
Right here. Okay. I gotta adjust.
All right, we're gonna go right into the next workshop. I thought we were taking a break. Right into the next workshop that's going to be with the sheriff, correct?
Yes.
Darling?
Yes.
That'll be at the bottom of that same page, there's a, some information there. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time to have us here tonight. We're here because several years ago, we realized at the sheriff's office that we might be able to provide our food services a little bit more efficiently and a little bit more economically. We began to reach out and network with other sheriffs throughout the country and throughout the state that had actually privatized their food service. We learned the good and the bad of it, and overwhelmingly, most of the sheriffs that we talked to said that it's been a success in their jails throughout the state and throughout the country as well. Admittedly, there are three entities that are gonna be directly affected by this, if this is something that we choose to do, that of course would be the jail, it would be the worker release for whom we presently provide meals for, and potentially the juvenile services center as well. When we launched this about six or eight months ago, one of the things that the council had been clear to us is they asked that while we do this research, that we also find out if, we could find out if it could be done just as efficiently and economically and meet the needs of the juvenile services center as well. So one of the things that's been very important to us has been that we wanted to make sure that we retain our current employees that we have here at the sheriff's office. We also wanna make sure that we can do it very efficiently, we wanna make sure that we can do it with the same nutritional value and the same chloric intake while meeting all the necessary nutritious needs of the inmates and the medical meals as well. We have talked to the juvenile services center, they've been involved in the conversation as well, and Erica Stalworth will be up here shortly. We've also talked to Rob Neary at the worker release center, and he's aware of this and he's supportive as well, but he's waiting to hear a little bit more of the final results. Our administrative coordinator, Jeanne Crossland, has put together a PowerPoint presentation, and she's actually gonna guide us through this. You should have a paper copy of it as well, so you can follow along and you can make notes.
Jeanne? Is that, is that this?
No, I have a.
Oh.
This is only a tiny piece.
Yeah, I was gonna say, she's gotta come.
Coming up.
How're you doing, Al?
I'm good.
Real good, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I get the rest? Thank you. Thank you. I've been leading to meet you, so we'll do it afterwards, okay? Thank you.
All right, I do that.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Jeanne Crossland, administrative coordinator for the jail, and I'm gonna go through this PowerPoint with you and kind of explain what we've found as far as the benefits that will be brought to the county by privatizing the food service for the county jail and community corrections and possibly juvenile services. Okay. We'll run through a cost comparison, cost savings, the funds needed in 2019 to finish out the year, and a possible budget restructuring for 2020. Go ahead. Our problems with the current setup have been obvious for a while. Increasing population and the rising cost of food has led Sheriff Boy to ask for additional appropriations many times over the past few years. But the current solution we're exploring is privatization. An RFP was recently published, and we have accepted big proposals from several vendors. We are here to share what we've learned and talk about the best type of contract for the county. So on this page, you'll see a cost comparison. We're 10 months into 2019, and we're already where we were at, at the end of 2018. Our ADP has increased by 68 from the previous year, and year-to-date, we have already served more meals than we have in 2018. We're on track to serve just over 500,000 meals this year between the jail and community corrections. And on this page, it's another comparison, looking at the numbers side by side. Our year-to-date food budget matches the total spent in 2018 so far. Next page is the cost per meal comparison. With the estimated cost of food through the end of 2019, plus the cost of labor, which is how they would do it in a contract, we could spend just shy of a million dollars this year on food and, and services. Our meal cost is estimated at $1.97 per meal when you include the labor, but an example up here is from one of our vendors of $1.29 per meal, same thing, food and, and labor combined. So this is an average price between all the bids that were offered, and you can see our cost savings will be pretty impressive. So the biggest advantage to going with a private vendor is that we get the discount that a large group can generate. The cost savings are passed along to the county taxpayer, and we're looking to save about 68 cents a meal at that. Looking into 2020, with the target contract date of 20, or sorry, January 1st in 2020, we'd like to make a fresh start with the 2020 budget. So additional money will be needed to cover the last two months of 2019. We're projecting 150,000 will get us through the end of the year, and if you're on board, we'd like to get on the agenda for the November meeting for that. Also, keeping in mind that November and December of 2018 bills were paid from the 2019 budget, so there'll be a grand total of 14 months' worth of food paid out of the 2019 budget if we do it this way. But then in 2020, we start with a clean slate, all that can go towards the, the vendor contract.
Wait, hang on. Mr. Gagelski, you don't mind asking questions as it goes along?
Go ahead.
So what is reimbursed right now to us for the food from the state?
For the jail, we don't get any reimbursements, but juvenile services gets reimbursements for their food, which is something Erica can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We, we are reimbursed for housing state prisoners, but we're not reimbursed for their meals, that's just part of the reimbursement cost, and that was the general fund.
Thanks, thank you.
Did you say meals now are $1.97?
If you factor in the labor, yes. Yes.
Back into labor?
Yeah, so that's.
The salaries and what it costs the people to cook them.
Yeah, are, yep. Yeah. Without that, it's somewhere around $1.60. So we're still, we're still pretty high, it's just because we can't get the good discount on the food.
See, we were told a year ago it was $1.21. It wasn't even a year ago, six months ago, it was $1.21, how'd it get to be $1.60?
The cost of the food's going up and the inmate population.
Food hasn't gone up that much in six months.
Well, that's the cost of feeding our inmates right now.
Eventually, I think you've got a person that's not, and I've said this before, Sheriff, you've got a person that's not utilizing bidding, calling around, getting bids, you're buying in quantity, there's, that's how you buy, and that's how you get prices, and you gotta be on the phone all the time. And I think that that person is just taking it and not doing, not doing her job.
In fact, we have had a number of conversations, and that's part of the reason that we're here. We realized that there was a problem, as I indicated about two years ago. Very difficult to find somebody to actually do that job, and we have tried to have as much oversight as we can. We realized there's a problem, we've identified it, now we have a solution, we're bringing it before you. So we, we represent a solution tonight, and we think we can do it more cost-effectively and more efficiently as well. And that's the bottom line.
Mr. Gagelski.
I'm not against privatizing, this is probably a good idea, and that may be the way we go, but if we don't, I would hope there's gonna be something done the way things are being done now.
I'm not following you.
With the person that's doing the purchases.
Well, that will be up to the new vendor that we have, that will be their job.
That's if we go.
His point is, is if we choose not to, something still needs to be done with the.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Gagelski.
Okay, you stated the, the amount of food's a dollar sixty roughly, which is fine. You also stated that it went up two reasons, one, it's had the population, and two, you said because of food costs. But it can only be food costs. It's food costs. Population does not change the amount of, per, per, per meal, I don't, it should be actually discounted if you're going to, not, it should not increase that amount.
That's true.
Okay, but is that.
Yeah, that would be fair.
It's okay, I don't need this up for me in a presentation, but I just wanna make sure I'm thinking the same thing.
You're following correctly, yes, I misspoke about that.
It's okay, so we're looking at total cost. You, I don't, you know, maybe it's me, but you know, I go to Gordon's, I buy things at discounts, I, I don't remember pricing going up anywhere that much in six months.
Or in the last four years, like, it's gone, it's, in the last four years, I think we're talking almost triple cost. If I remember right, the budget was $210,000 twice a year, is that what you got right now?
No, actually, three times a year.
It's, pardon?
Three times a year.
Three times, well, it was only twice a year before. I think it's always been twice a year, because we always start out the year, and then about six months into it, we get another one, and it was a 210,000, I know Connie would, would know that, and now we're, last year, we're talking almost $700,000 for food.
Right.
And even if that's 14 months, which I think it was, purchasing's always, the bills can't be paid in November and December, so it's always been that way.
Exactly. Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, that to me, it's out of control, I mean, there's gotta be something done.
That's why we're here.
I know.
Trying to agree with this.
Thank you for that.
Right. Mr. Gagelski. So back to my question, I would say, if you went over the last three years, there's been some price increases, but I can't see that, that percentage that you're talking about in six months, and I know that you're kinda up here as the, the dark board, but I just don't see that.
I see what you're getting at.
I, I shop, I go to stores, I go to discount stores, and I don't see none of that stuff going up like that.
Potentially, I think what you're hitting on is that the quality of the food has probably gone up, which means our inmate population is a little bit happier because their tummies are happy.
Yeah, but, I know, but when you come in front of us, you come in front of us and say, okay, the population goes up, we need more money for food, but nobody's come to us and say, can we go with this because we're asking for, for their stomachs to feel better? I get that, and I'm not trying to be mean about, mean-spirited about it, but I also don't understand. I think that there should've been some more explanation come along the way, I, I think it's only fair for the people that budget and for the people, for you to come back, and none of this has ever been discussed. There's never been this huge increase in six months that I remember here in the last couple of months, that I remember the sheriff asking for. He told me the population went up, he needed more money, I got that, but not the price protect, there should not be, should've went up to that price.
I, I was shocked when I did the math, too, I understand.
But you understand food costs up in six months is not gonna happen, like, not like that, unless we made it go up.
Well, we're hoping to do something about that today.
All right.
Okay.
Can I have one more stupid question?
Yes, no more stupid question.
This is a stupid question. I know you said it this way, but I'll be, I'll say it nicely the way you say it, okay, if their stomachs are feeling better, are their stomachs gonna feel better with the vendor?
They are looking to keep our calorie count the same.
I don't think we, we increase or decrease calories, whether we decide to give them an extra cheese on their sandwich is not an increase or decrease of calories, it'll increase your, yeah, maybe my stomach will get a little bit, but other than that, it's not gonna do anything.
Are they gonna treat that the same way that you guys have been treating it? Do you anticipate the quality being the same, we're not gonna have an issue with?
Okay, yeah, if, yes, if they talk about, all of these vendors that we've gotten a bid back from have talked about your food quality will not go down, your calorie count will stay the same or, you know, higher. That price that I gave you, $1.29 per meal, is a true price from one of our vendors that would equal everything that we're doing right now. So they, yeah, nothing, nothing will suffer with, let's just switch to the contract.
So again, the quality of food, the nutrition value is, it's mandated anyway in, in some regards, that's going to be maintained, and we're not saying it's going to a higher level, but we're certainly not saying it's going under, okay?
Nothing will be sacrificed by, by switching to the vendor by the lower cost, just the, the best thing about it is that we get the discount on the food, so.
You better make meals a day, three?
Somewhere around, yeah, three meals a day, so right now, we're serving somewhere around 1,200 meals a day. So for your consideration in 2020, if you, we propose that the money designated for salaries and benefits could be moved into the food budget to start 2020 with a bigger budget, preventing us from coming back so many times and asking for food money. A side note on this is when we transitioned from the county nurses to the contracted nurses in 2016, we did the same thing, we moved our, our salaries and benefits into the professional services budget to cover the difference in cost, so, just a suggestion.
Yeah, but let me, let me say this, because we generally don't do business like that, where we're gonna give you the entire amount for the year, I don't know where the advantage would be to you guys, it is an advantage to us because we leave it in a, in a fund, and we all know that, it ain't making a lot, it's not making a lot of money, but I, I think that you would succumb to the idea too, that we, we give you half when we start the year, come June, we give you the other half. Okay, unless you can tell me what would be the advantage to this council who's funding it to put up the entire amount for the year? Can you?
It's, it's just a suggestion, I would say otherwise, then that money would just sit there in those budgets and not be used for anything.
This is a vendor, monthly or quarterly or?
They bill, it depends on the vendor, so one that we're, just an example, one that we're looking at, they do every 30 days, they bill every 30 days.
Okay.
Which is maybe something we need to talk about because with the pay schedule too, if that could be expedited, just so they have that within, it's a net 30, so, something to think about too.
Okay.
But yes, of course, the budget restructure would all be up to you guys, just a suggestion.
I'm liking the next part about your local buying.
Yes. Yes, that's definitely a plus. There are two different RFPs that were published in October, one included the jail and community corrections meals, the other encompassed the juvenile services as well. Ms. Stalworth will talk a little bit about how it'll affect the juvenile services, but from our perspective, the, these are a few pros and cons that we've come up with.
if that could be expedited, just so they have that within, it's a net 30, so, something to think about, too. But yes, of course, the budget restructure would all be up to you guys, just a suggestion.
I'm liking the next part about your local buying.
Yes, yes, that's definitely a plus. There are two different RFPs that were published in October. One included the jail and community corrections meals, the other encompassed the juvenile services as well. Ms. Stallworth will talk a little bit about how it'll affect the juvenile services, but from our perspective, these are a few pros and cons that we've come up with. Like Mr. Santana pointed out, we get to use our local vendors, so the bread, milk, and any miscellaneous things from our next-door neighbor Ludwig's would still be kept as a contractor. The vendors would hire all the current employees, so they would assume their benefits and everything. And by including the juvenile center in the contract, which was the separate RFP that we had, we could keep the kitchens set up the way that they are and still benefit from the cost savings.
Why do you not serve pork?
Religious reasons. Yep.
Is that across the country? Section 1983, well, it just subject...
It subjects you to section 1983 claims, especially for the Muslim population and the Jewish population.
Is that across the country, or Indiana?
Well, no, it's a federal law, it's federal law.
So, all jails are not serving pork?
Well, people can make a religious request in order to have their meals separate, but the way that their kitchen's set up, you can't cross-contaminate, sort of like the peanut issues, so that's...
Right. So, when one doesn't want it, nobody gets it?
Well, on the same table, you're preparing the other thing.
Correct, you're worried about the cross-contamination.
But there's ways to do it, you could, the day before, you could serve, make something, there are ways to do it.
But there are, but why subject yourself to potential lawsuits and then myself?
I'll tell you what, go look at a jail, we got lawsuits all the time, that's nothing new. Let's forget that idea, okay?
If you can prevent one lawsuit, it's your money.
If you could, if it's doable.
And this does.
Does it, are other jails having a problem doing this?
Yes, but there are some jails that are so large, they have multiple kitchens, where one kitchen facility will serve just the medical and the meals that are, have allergies, and then the other kitchen simultaneously will be feeding food to just the general population. We're not that big, we don't have our kitchen broken down into several different sections.
What would your guess be of the Muslim count that we have right now, of the 500 of the...
As of today, or as of last week, it was one, wasn't it?
No, well, no, that was kosher diet, we have about five or six Muslim diets right now.
We couldn't make the day before five or six meals, would not be cross-contaminated, and make the burger dinner on...
There's a big issue in using the same kitchen, period.
And what you did the day before?
It doesn't matter, you're still making something in that kitchen.
I think that we need to look into stuff like that instead of just biasly saying...
I know, I've dealt with working with kitchens and working with different dietary rules, and you have to have a separate kitchen, as he was suggesting, and so therefore, we're not going to build a separate kitchen just for five people.
All right.
There's a few other cons as far as if we can still combine, that's not a problem, but if we were to use the same kitchen, the fruit causes a problem. If any fruit got up into the jail, they do like to clog the plumbing system with that, make some fermented beverages. And with the emergency weather situations that we've had in our county in the past, transporting food to and from, or from the jail to the juvenile center three times a day, potentially more, and not getting there in a timely fashion could pose a lot of problems, too. There's some licensing that the juvenile center kitchen has gone through in order to get some of their grants, and just to be able to operate. If we made the food just out of the jail kitchen, we may have to bring that up to the juvenile center standards, and that could cost money, too. So, we actually might be saving money by keeping the kitchen separate, even though you will still have to maintain two kitchens with their equipment.
But it would be under this vendor?
Yes. Well, the maintenance, it depends on the vendor, again, we'll have to look at that.
Okay, quick question, so, all your employees are, you're going to move over, that's fine, but the employee that is up for whoever the next sheriff happens to be is the matron slash this. But he won't be coming up, because the person knows he's only hired, or she's hired, it doesn't matter who the person is, for the duration of the sheriff.
2020, through 2020, correct.
So, what is the requirement at that point? So, are we going to use a matron if the next sheriff would request a matron, or will we use the employee that they have?
For the next sheriff coming in, you mean?
Yes.
The vendor contract, yeah, would go through the end of your term, and then it's up for renegotiation every year after that, so it is up to whatever the new sheriff and the council wants to do.
So, the new sheriff said, I don't want the matron to be part of that, I want to bring that position back, they would have to do that. The matron is going to be absorbed into the new vendor?
I asked a really good question, so it's because you don't know what the new...
The new administration that's going to be coming in inevitably. But is that a... It's a great question.
Is that at the pleasure of the sheriff, that he can bring that back and take it away?
I would think so, but perhaps, and I could be wrong, that may be the pleasure of the council as to whether they want to fund that position. So, in theory, maybe the sheriff could name a matron, but if the council chooses not to fund the position, it's going to be entitled only, the way I see it, but I could be wrong.
I know, like, when I first got on, there was a position, there was actually to have housing and all that type of thing, too, but what happened was is that they just stopped using the facility, and so it just went away. I don't know if this is going to tend to go away because of the same factor, I don't know. But, you know, we were supposed to house the sheriff at one point, too.
That was way back.
Yeah. You're dating yourself.
Things have changed, don't they?
Is there anything else on your part?
Just the last slide about all the cost savings, so...
Now, that is the, sorry, I turned it off, 383, is that yours, or is that including...
That's just ours.
That's yours and community corrections?
And community corrections.
Okay.
I did do the math, if you want to know a number, it's just about $10,000 less to include all the juvenile services, too, because when you add the number of employees that they have to it, it does bring the price per meal up a little bit, but we do get a little bit more of a discount because we're serving more meals, so it kind of brings it back in. We're just saving about $370,000.
Great.
To include all of them.
Thank you.
Erica, could I have a question? Now, if I'm reading this correct, the proposed budget would be $419,103, and that's total, that's no matter what the population would be, or did I miss something?
That would be if you took the food budget and combined it with the employee budgets that we have right now for the kitchen, that would give us a budget of $419,000 to pull from, but by doing the math and the number of inmates that we've had this year, we probably would overshoot that and have to come back and ask for more, but it's not like a total contract amount. We have to still go off of the ADP, how many inmates we serve per day, in order to get that bottom line, what's it going to cost?
I was going to say, if that's total, yeah, that would be too good to be true, right?
It would be, it would be.
But keep in mind, the criminal rule 26 goes into effect next year, which we think will lessen our population.
Yeah.
However, we don't know. One of the judges projects that it may be 20 inmates per day or less, but that still puts us over where we should be.
Then some of the studies that I went to down in Indianapolis, why they say it hasn't been any difference with the...
We just don't know, that's why I said it's a what-if. I don't think it will, I know it won't increase our inmate population, but it will probably decrease, we just don't know how much.
Yeah, just how substantial, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Erica Stallworth, Director of the Juvenile Services Center. So, do you want to talk a little bit about how this might affect the juvenile center? First, I wanted to thank Sheriff and his team for including us in this discussion. So, in front of you, I did a list of pros and cons, and some of you haven't been out to the center. So, as you know, we have an emergency shelter care side and a security detention side. So, our security detention side, those children are fed on a cart, the kitchen prepares their meals on a tray, they get double portions, it's sent down, because we're supposed to offer seconds, so we automatically give them seconds. On our shelter care side, those kids are status offenders and also children who are wards of the state, they're abused, neglected foster care kids, and they're served out of a window in our dining room. So, they're able to come up to a window and be served like family style, sit and eat with staff, and have a meal that way. So, in discussions with some of the vendors, we were able to, their goal is to keep everything the same, so that's good news. So, if they're able to keep everything the same as far as our menus, our recipes, our requirements to make sure that we meet our standards, I think it's a win-win situation. If they're not, then I don't think it would be a good idea. And the main reason is that packet I sent you, or I handed out to you, this is an application for our food program. I have to do this every four years, it's very detailed, it asks about our kitchen layout, we have to submit menus, we have to just fill out a lot of information, it takes a long time, and a lot of information goes into it, I actually just did it for the next four years. So, the vendors don't have experience doing this, admittedly, they've never done it before. So, my key concern is that we would be dependent on a third party to make sure that we're in compliance with our license. I am willing to assist whoever the vendor is getting this done, to make sure it's done correctly, but when it comes to inspections and reports and things like that, we'll have to reach out to them to get that information, to make sure that we're on board. We have a DOC side, the security detention side, that requires certain information from the kitchen in our program. Right now, the food is in-house, the kitchen manager's in-house, so we can just get that right away. So, it would just take a little bit extra work to get what we need, to make sure that we're still compliant with our state requirements.
Can I ask you?
Yes, yes.
Is it possible, and I'm, is it possible to, and I'm looking at the sheriff and at the county attorney, to add this language that this document, in other words, this has to be part of that, I mean, so that it's not missed, and it's part of it? You're saying that they've never done it before, but if it's something they need to do, we need to actually add that as part of the protocol, so it's not, you know, I mean, it's being done?
And has to be maintained every four years.
So, I mean, that, okay.
Yep. So, really, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through everything. One of the other main concerns is just the staffing, our staff, you know, have been with the county for a while, so they would lose their seniority, but they would also get different benefits with the new vendor. And there were some questions on there as far as what that would mean for the JSC. Right now, we have our own budget, $70,000, and we also get reimbursements through the National School Lunch Program, which we would be able to continue to do. However, if we do not have a separate kitchen, which really, that's the only way I think this will work, is if we maintain our own kitchen and they maintain theirs. If we didn't use our kitchen, we'd have to give back a value of depreciation for the equipment we bought through the Department of Ed. So, if we don't use our kitchen, we have to send a value of money back. I'm not sure how much that would be. So, really, sorry, all my ums. And then other questions would just be if we have separate budgets, I think it would make more sense to actually keep separate budgets. However, if we don't, who's going to pay what, and where's it going to be paid out of, and who's going to be in charge of maintenance or repair of our kitchen as well, so for the equipment that's there.
Is the, is there additional cost to this if we maintain two kitchens?
Personnel?
As far as the maintenance of the equipment goes, or...
Well, it would be, I understand it's the maintenance of the equipment. We're still going to maintain the equipment, whether we have outsourced people in there or not, but aside from the maintenance of, you've got to replace a dishwasher every so many years, is there any added cost of having staff there and here?
No.
Doing that?
Nope, no, we've got confirmation from one of the vendors that they could keep the price that they bid the same, no matter what kitchen they use.
Is it, and this might be far-fetched, is it possible to, at the kitchen that's next door to community corrections, that's at the juvenile center, is it possible for them to do the meals next door, so someone's not running from downtown all the way out there every time? Makes sense to walk them across the yard, for, I know it's not a walk across the yard, than it is to drive them across town if we were to maintain two kitchens?
You mean not use the juvenile center kitchen and use the...
No, I'm saying use it, but actually cook for community corrections there instead of...
Yeah, you know, we'd probably have to talk to them and see if they had any restrictions like we do about the adult meals with the pork and things like that.
Because we serve pork.
Yeah. If they don't have those restrictions.
Yes, Mr. Santana. Yeah, and I think I get where Randy's going to, to some degree, and there has been a point of conversation a number of times to say, give us a rundown again as far as the staff that you have over there, and the average number of inmates that these, that your staff is cooking for.
Right now, I can give you the total for 2018, would that be helpful? So, the total resident meals that we serve was 10,527, and the total staff meals that we serve was 7,981, and that is by statute. I know there's been some questions about us serving meals to staff members, but per our license in the code, it says that our direct care staff shall eat with the kids and shall eat what they're eating. So, is that helpful?
Um, no. Average number of inmates per day, let's go there. I want to do some simple numbers.
Yeah, I didn't bring that with me.
Ten-ish?
Probably...
We've heard that number.
Probably around 10 or maybe a little bit less.
How many people come into that kitchen on a daily basis, like your preppers, your helpers, your real cook?
Sure, two full-time, two full-timers, and one part-timer right now, but we really need another part-timer for the weekends.
Oh, to cook for 10 people?
No, it's not 10.
On a day, daily basis?
We also have our staff NOVA program, the A2E program, so it's more than 10.
Twenty?
But they have to work 40 hours and 28 hours, right? So, if you have, it's more than 10 people a day.
Okay, 20?
So, yeah, let's go with 20.
And we've got three people in that kitchen cooking for 20 people? I mean, I've been in the food business before, and I've worked a kitchen.
And we also have, when we're not fully staffed, our secretary goes in and cooks, and it's a lot to do, because this isn't just regular, you have to make their food, you know, it's recipes that you have to use for...
I like to cook. But anyway, all right, I just, I needed that breakdown, thank you.
All right, did you say, well, the breakdown, did you say 10,000 meals for the inmates?
Yes.
And 7,000 for the staff?
Yes.
And now, what was the regulation on feeding staff?
Sure, it's 46, you can look it up, it's 46 Indiana Code 2-10-76H. Direct care staff shall eat with the children and shall receive the same food as the children, except for dietary needs of the workers or the children.
So, that's regulated that they have to?
Yes, sir.
That's news to me, I never heard that one before. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any other questions, Mr. Stallworth?
I just wanted to make note that I was here when they were opening all the bids, and there was a significant difference depending on the vendor, and the cost for the juvenile service center was all over the place. It was anything from $2 to $4 and change. So, I'm certain that the vendor that you've chosen is the best for all of it, you know, I just don't remember, and I don't have my sheet here, because when, as we were reading them off, it was kind of hard to keep pace, keep pace with it, but I was here, and I know that there was at least $2 to $3 difference, and then even with, because there's snacks involved, too, so I'm not convinced that bringing a vendor in works, although I do like the idea, that if they can bring and give you the reporting that you need, that is huge savings, and if they can also supply the staffing that you need when sometimes when you run short, that is also a good thing.
We're committed to making sure that it doesn't lax anywhere, whether it's in the jail or with you, so...
Yeah, and that's all we ask for, whichever way works, that's fine with us.
Absolutely, thank you, we appreciate it. Does anybody else have anything regarding the sheriff privatizing food service? Not it? That workshop is over, we're going to go immediately into the next workshop before you get up. The next...
Hearing, it's a budget hearing.
Correct. And, oh, this is the, this is the Fort County Library's budget.
The adaption for their budget.
The adoption of the budget for the public library.
Thanks, you guys, for coming, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
We're going to, what do you do? Is this this? No, that's that one. We'll put two or three on top, show you some...
Yes.
Let's take a three-minute break and... Yeah, no, I like 6:15.
No, I can't... Correct, this is continuation of our budget hearing with the library. Come on down. So, has everybody had a chance to review the information that she has given us regarding the budget? Does anybody have any questions of her?
No, I actually had the pleasure of sitting with her and her accountant and going through, getting a lot of questions answered, and I will tell you, I enjoyed the experience. I'm a numbers guy, being CPA, so I got all the answers I need, and an earlier discussion also this weekend with you, sir, helped me really feel good about where we're headed with it.
I, too, sat with her and the accountant, and it was not as enjoyable as it was with you, I might say.
We tried.
You're a number person, it was enjoyable sitting and talking with you.
Mr. President, would you like me to call the roll first for, so that we have a record of...
So, you have an official, would you please, Madam Administrator, call the roll?
Thank you. Mr. Garner?